Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise for the presentation of the colors that are from Reynolds High School? These students are instructed by Lieutenant Colonel David Wise, U.S. Army Retired.
Hood, hold. Left, face. Present, colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here, colors. Right, face. Forward, march.
I ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the agenda.
Uh huh, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Dr. Baldwin, we'll hear from you now at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You may or may not be aware that October 1st was National Cyber Security Day, and on that morning throughout our entire district, our 6th through 12th graders worked through a fake email extortion hoax. Has anybody been the victim of that in the audience?
Yeah.
And that allowed our staff in our schools to maximize a teachable moment regarding safety. As we know, this issue potentially impacts all of us that access the Internet, and I want to thank our outstanding Director of Technology, Mr. Barry Pace, who's in the room with us tonight, for facilitating this very important session. He is also encouraging our teachers across the county and licensed staff to earn digital learning credit by viewing two videos. The first is email and messaging safety and cybersecurity, along with planning one related cyber safety lesson. So Barry, thank you for your leadership with that. That's just a very important educational piece for all of our students in the schools and ourselves as well. We have a new app. It is called Say Something. That is a youth violence program from Sandy Hook Promise, which is a national organization. And the Say Something anonymous reporting system and app has been purchased by our state, by the Department of Public Instruction, to provide students and community stakeholders a way to submit secure and anonymous safety concerns that identify and will intervene upon at-risk individuals before they hurt themselves or others. We have currently begun the training phase for staff and properly being able to access the system, and full implementation will take place in the months ahead. And future training will also be included for all of our students and our school communities. So we're excited about the prospects and the potential for that app. I'm also pleased to announce that Buckham County Schools has launched a new college and career awareness planning software. We talked a little bit about that at our last meeting board. It is called Noviance. And Noviance will ultimately provide our middle and high school students and their families with a wide array of college planning and career assessment tools. Our school counselors and administrators are currently being trained on how to navigate the system, and our high school seniors have already begun to use the app with plans to roll it out to other grades in the months ahead. Gosh, we've got a lot going on out there, don't we, guys? I want to remind you that our district-wide advisory council meeting that is scheduled to be held at Owen High School on Tuesday, October 15th, that will begin at 6:00 P.M. And the program's theme will center on vaping, the new look of addiction. Both a keynote speaker and expert panel of health educators will be featured as well. So board, that certainly, each and every person's able to make that very important assembly. October is National School Principals Month, and we recently recognized Ms. Tanya Robinson at Inca High School as the district's Principal of the Year, and Ms. Robinson's here tonight. She was chosen by her peers, which I think makes that honor even more special. Ms. Robinson is an excellent representative of all the dedicated and highly professional leaders that we have in our schools. And so I would encourage everyone to take a moment this month and recognize the principal or principals that have such an impact on your specific student or our students throughout the district. And for Pete's sakes, we've got so many principals in this room, how can we bypass an opportunity to recognize them here from the board and out in the audience? So principals, if you'll stand up, we want to recognize you and all that you do. Finally, a calendar note, that on October 28th, we will be holding a Designated Teacher Work Day, and that will allow professional development to take place across the entire district. And that concludes my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you. It is now time for good news.
Good evening.
Oh, there she is.
Came up from behind. Good evening, Dr. Baldwin, Madam Chair, members of the board. So this evening, we have a lot of special people to recognize, some for keeping our students safe and others for helping students gain a better appreciation for reading. So first up, we'll have Dr. Paula Pinkerton come on down. She's the principal at Estes Elementary. She's here to help us recognize some of the organizers and participants of Firefighters for Literacy, and we have several local firefighters who are also here this evening as well. If you guys could come on down and stand right about here.
Good evening. As a leader in me school, we are committed at Estes to growing leaders one child at a time. We start each morning making a pledge to each other that we are learners, we are leaders, and we are family. So when we had the opportunity to partner with the Asheville firefighters, who are real leaders in our community every day, we were so excited to have them join our partnership. You might ask, what do they bring to the education world? Well, let me tell you. We have had numerous agencies over the years that wanted to work with our children on reading, but wow, the excitement that a fire truck and firefighters can have on 760 children getting excited about reading a book. They are just screaming with delight when the firefighters come for our pep rally and to get, to kick off the year with that. So every other month, they come to our school and they read with our students, so they model that accountability of reading, and they also are even brave enough to go to recess with our 4th graders. Impressive, because not too many people are brave enough to go out there and do that. So we are excited to recognize Mr. Scott Mullins, who is the president of the local union, and Mr. Ellis and Mr. Mingle tonight, and I have to give credit to Ms. Angie Trantham, our assistant principal, who is the spearhead of getting this program at our school. Her husband is a firefighter, and so when they were looking for a school to reach out to and do this, Ms. Trantham said, hey, come to Estes, and we are, it has been a great partnership ever since, and we're thrilled to have them at Estes. So I'm just going to turn it over to Mr. Mullins.
My name's Scott Mullins. I'm the president of the Asheville Firefighters Association. How many of you have seen the highlights of the Asheville Firefighters for Literacy program? Just a couple? Okay. It's been on the news quite a bit, but those of you who haven't seen it, it's an outstanding program dreamed up by these two gentlemen over here, John Ellis and James Mingle. They worked very, very hard to put the program together, and they developed a great plan and have executed it perfectly with the help of the amazing staff from Estes Elementary. Great job, all of you, for that. We are so proud of how well the program has worked and of our members, who often show up with smiles on their faces and greet the kids in the mornings after working long 24-hour shifts and a lot of times not sleeping, but they've been so excited and they bring so much energy into the classroom, and that energy is contagious, and they help make reading fun. Without their help, the program would not be so successful. There's a number of them, but a lot of them weren't obviously able to be here tonight, but they loved the program, and without them, there would not be a successful program. Most importantly, we are proud of the almost 600 students who achieved awards. If you guys could turn around, these are the shirts that the kids get. The smile on their faces when they're awarded these shirts is amazing, and we're so proud that we're able to be a part of that program. We have a long history of giving back to the community, but this is by far one of our favorite programs, and we would look forward to continuing it this year and many years in the future. Thank you.
I'm not as good at speaking in front of crowds as these guys, but studies show that reading for pleasure is more likely to determine a child's success in school. It's more, it's more likely to determine the child's success in school than their social or economic background. So that's one of the reasons we wanted, we chose this program, we developed this program. We wanted to make reading fun. So we started it off with a fun pep rally, we had the kids playing games, and the end of the year, the grand prize for this program was, the kid that reads the most hours in each grade level got a ride to school in a fire truck. And then the kid from each classroom that had the most reading hours got a pancake and ice cream party that morning. So we got them all sugared up and then sent them back to their teachers, so I'm sure they loved us for that. But in addition to that, we, all of our guys that came out wore one of these T-shirts, and the kids had an opportunity to earn these T-shirts, so, and we gave almost 600 shirts out to these kids, and some kids really went above and beyond to earn them. So it was, it was a lot of fun for us, and it was a lot of fun for the kids, and it was very successful.
Yeah, what I also enjoyed about it was, yeah, I mean, our main motivation was to just that, motivate kids to read more, but it became much more than that throughout the months. And, you know, when we're eating lunch with the kids, going in there, you know, and they're, you know, yelling our names, I had no idea that any of them even knew my name. I didn't even remember mentioning my name half the time. And when they're, you know, yelling our names, come sit with them, and it became more of that, and it became more of like a mentorship as well, so that was fantastic, and, I mean, just the motivation, motivation to read at home, too, you know. In my opinion, if that gets them out of a tablet a little bit longer, then, you know, that's a good thing for me. So we're looking forward to next year, and we're excited to work with Estes again.
You all can stand kind of in the middle. Dr. Pinkerton, if you could come here, please. to the podium, we want to recognize some longtime SROs who've made a huge impact in our schools for our students and staff. So if Deputy Ray could come and stand right about here, and if Lieutenant Ruby could come on down, stand right about here as well.
You know, Mr. Ray, you look a little different tonight than you usually do. Please, not in uniform.
Good evening, everyone. It is an absolute honor to be here, to even be able to talk about what they have accomplished in the SRO Division as well with the Sheriff's Office. So I would first like to say thank you guys so much for your hard work and dedication, and all the many years you've put in to the Buckham County Sheriff's Office as well as the Buckham County School System. I've had the pleasure of working with both of these guys. Lieutenant Ruby, I still call him Lieutenant Ruby, can't get past that. He has been a huge mentor and inspiration in my career and just in my personal life. He is about as genuine as you can get as far as a person, and I really appreciate the time that I've been allowed to be around him and, and learn the things that I've learned from him. So really appreciate that, and through the many years, we've had great memories, and I can tell you, he has entertained us quite often, kept us laughing. So, and then Mickey Ray, for the officers, or for the principals who have worked with him, you guys know that he has a gift of working with, with kids. And I have witnessed many kids that, you know, looked up to him greatly throughout his career and continue to do so. I don't think they'll ever forget about Mickey Ray. So we just really appreciate both of these guys, we miss them greatly, so we're excited that they're here tonight, and they are being recognized for their hard work. Do either one of you guys have anything you want to share, say?
No pressure.
I'll always talk, thank you. I'm just, my retirement is good so far, so if you got close to that, it's something to look forward to, but I do miss all the many friends that I made over the years, and many of them fill this, this seats up right now, these principals that we were in partnership with all the years, and the, the school partnership with the Sheriff's Office has always been a top partnership, both for the school system and the Sheriff's Office. And I know that Sheriff Miller makes that a top priority in his administration as well. He wants to take it to the next level. I've left my position in great hands with Kelly Ball, she'll take it to the next level as well, and I'm just very thankful that you principals and Dr. Baldwin have always made us feel like just as much a part of the school system as we did the law enforcement agency, and I'll be forever grateful for that, and I appreciate, I get credit a lot, got credit a lot of times for the job that SROs like Mickey Ray did all the time in there, and Kelly's right about Mickey and all the others as well. So thank you for that partnership, and continue to support them, and I know they will you as well. So thank you for this tonight, I appreciate it very much.
Just as I shared last week at the Sheriff's Office, never thought that I would get to 30 years of working with some fine, fine individuals. See some of my students in here tonight, it's just been awesome. Just like I said, coming out of one of the roughest neighborhoods in this city, never thought I'd make it to 30 years, but I'm here, I've had fun, thank you for your support over the years, appreciate it.
Dr. Baldwin wanted to say a few words as well. You can do it from your chair, wherever you're comfortable.
We need to embarrass these, both of these guys a little further. I have had the incredible honor since the beginning of my school administrative career of working with both of these professionals. And let me tell you, through the years, as I've gone away from Buckham County and I've gone to administrator conferences across this state, we have been the envy of this entire state regarding the quality of our School Resource Officer Program. These two individuals are at that foundation from the start. Mike Ruby's leadership has been nothing less than absolutely excellent, and the rapport he's built with many of us out in the schools has just, just been outstanding, and I agree, Lieutenant Ball's going to continue that tradition. And I got to tell you about Mickey Ray, I've worked side by side with him, he's one of the best high school SROs that I ever worked around, but I understand that he was just as good at the elementary level, but I never worked with him because I hadn't been at the elementary level, but the reason he's so good with the younger children, he's a gentle giant. Now, he's, I've seen him as a tough, tough guy, but he's also a gentle giant, and it's that blend that makes our program and our SROs just absolutely top first-class quality. So thank both of you for, for a profession and a career well, well worked.
The next item on the agenda, agenda is our curriculum feature, Ms. Wonger.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baldwin, this is the month that we celebrate our principals, but we also share our last year's performance. It has just been approved by the State Board of Education this week for 2018-19. We have celebrations among Buckham County Schools, and we have some challenges. Are we always where we want to be? Nope, we did not reach the bar in several areas, but we have plans in place, and I think our principals could attest that we've had lots of conversation since August and lots of intentional planning. It was refreshing to hear the firefighters supporting reading, because it is about literacy, and it's about literacy in every classroom, every day, every content area. If we aren't reading, writing, thinking, and speaking, and listening, and moving, we are not doing our job. And principals have a task ahead of them because they're never satisfied. Even when they made wonderful growth in some areas, there's always room for improvement, and we never get there. So we have great strategies in place, I think the work is intentional, and it's purposeful, it's very simple, it's back to basics, but it's challenging. Steve has done a great job of pulling the data together, and I think you have that report. I imagine you will have some questions, but really, we're going to focus on not only the summative data, and we know this is summative, and we know these test outcomes affect 3rd grade, 4th grade, 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, and then our high school content areas that are tested, Math 1, English 2, Biology, and now Math 3. But K-12 is important, and we have to have a success at every grade level so that our students are performing where we know we can perform. So Mr. Airwood's going to lead this. We're really going to focus on growth, because our stance is, and Dr. Baldwin said it beautifully earlier this evening, every student can and should grow. There's no excuse when we don't grow a student. If we grow all of our students with rigor, then proficiency will take care of itself, because we still have two measures in North Carolina, and we're still a bit confusing. So we really want to help answer any questions that you may have, but especially surrounding growth. So Mr. Airwood, thank you for doing this presentation.
A blank canvas.
Oh, if I push the button, then it's not booked anymore. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baldwin, it's my privilege to present Madam Chair's most favorite, favorite curriculum feature of the year.
Indeed.
I know she loves this and can't wait for this presentation, so.
With bated breath.
Yes. Well, you know, as Dr. Pinkerton mentioned, we have a number of our schools that are leader-in-me schools, and as I walk into those buildings, and one of the pillars that you see painted like a pencil on the, on the onings is, begin with the end in mind. And with that said, that's where I want to start. What is the end for us in, in public schools is our graduation rate. So that's where we want to start, and looking at our graduation rate. As you can see, we have a large historical data referencing our graduation rate. This past year, Buckham County graduated 86.9% of our students within four years. So we measure from the time they start 9th grade to the time they graduate, hopefully four years later. And 86%, you see that's slightly above the state average, and we've kind of tracked that way for a little bit. So obviously, we want better, but, but we're doing really well in our graduation rate. The second, what I call the end in mind, or the begin with the end in mind, is our ACT, because this is really demonstrating our students' preparedness, if you will, for moving to that next level of either career or college. And, and you can see that we have two measures for ACT. The measure I'm showing here is the composite. So if you take the four subtests and you get a composite score, you can see that in Buckham County, that composite score was 19.1. Keep in mind, to be eligible to enroll in a North Carolina public college, you have to have a minimum ACT score of 17. So we're tracking a bit above that, and as you can see, our pattern has improved greatly as opposed to the state. So we're, we're actually bucking the trend of the state in terms of our ACT. And you'll see another way that we also measure ACT in just a couple of minutes. Under the Every Student Succeeds Act, which was enacted in 2017, which is what we're currently under, North Carolina developed certain indicators to kind of quantify our performance. And as you know, we, we receive a school grade for every school, and the factors that go into that school grade for grades 3 through 8, and, and as you can see, and one thing I hope you notice is there's not many indicators. It's basically test scores. I mean, that's the indicator in our elementary, intermediate, and middle schools. In grades 3 through 8, we look at ELA in math, both proficiency and growth, and you can see our reading proficiency and our math proficiency there. And then we also measure science in grades 5 and 8, proficiency and growth. A third indicator that some of our elementary and middle schools might have is the English learner progress. We actually have nine schools where that indicator, they have enough students to, to make that indicator, and that was 43.2%. I want to make a comment about that. I don't think that is overly accurate. We had some technical difficulties with our EL access testing this year, where we think that some of our students were not accurately scored, especially in the speaking part, because they spoke into a computer and it did not record it correctly. And I'm working with the state on correcting that.
Like my telephone.
Yep, yep. So, so we're trying to get that problem corrected, so it is accurate. I think we're doing a much better job than 43.2. In our high schools, and again, I want you to notice, there are a greater number of indicators that high schools have than do our elementary and middle school. Not all of them are necessarily related to testing, okay? So in grades 9 through 12, in the tested areas, we're looking at English 2, Math 1, Math 3, for both proficiency and growth. We look at Biology, but for proficiency only. We do not measure growth in Biology. Just a weird quirk of the Every Student Succeeds Act, that, that we don't do that. We look at Math Course Rigor. Math Course Rigor is the percent of 12th graders earning a North Carolina Math 3 credit. And you can see in Buckham County, 93% of our students are earning that credit. Keep in mind, that 12th grader also includes students at pep, it includes our occupational course of study students as well. Every 12th grader is counted, okay? We have our next indicator, which is the ACT and ACT work keys, they are combined into Again, English learner progress could be an indicator, but we did not have any high schools that had enough students to populate that indicator. Okay? Now, schools are graded on a 15-point scale, and you can see the scale there where growth counts as 20% and proficiency counts as 80%. And you've heard Dr. Baldwin repeatedly advocate that we need something closer to a 50-50 model. And I'm going to show you, and I will continue to show why that is here in a second. But I do want to say that this 15-point scale, because we always played the game every year, what's it going to be next year? What's it going to be next year? Because it was a year-to-year thing. The General Assembly did make this permanent in 2019. So we don't have to worry about, okay, what's it going to look like? We know what it's going to be moving forward. It's going to be a 15-point scale. So looking at grades, we can see that Buncombe County had 39 of our 43 schools that earned a grade, received a grade of C or better. And you can see how that compares to the state. We had two schools that earned an A. That was Middle College and Discovery Academy. Okay? 17 schools received a B. 20 schools received a C. That was a flip. Last year, we had it the other way around. We had 20 schools received a B and 17 received a C. So we had some movement there. Had three schools receive a D and one school received an F. And this is the first year that Buncombe County has had a school with that designation. We look at the other component where we're looking at growth. We'll separate the growth and proficiency part, the 20 and the 80. I do have a reason for putting growth first because that's where growth is in my heart. It's first. Okay? But 32% of our schools met or exceeded growth. And you can see how that compares to the state. Nine schools exceeded expected growth. Okay? And that's always the, I would say, where we want to be. That's the ultimate standard, I guess. And you can see those nine schools listed there. 23 of our schools met expected growth and they are listed. And then 10 of our schools did not meet expected growth. Okay? And this is the challenge that Ms. Swanger referenced earlier. Because we do think, and I'll be honest, my PDP goal is all of our schools will meet or exceed expected growth. I mean, that's a goal I have personally. But you can see those 10 schools there. Now, looking at the achievement side, again, this is the 80% part. Grade level proficiency or levels three, four, and five, that's what goes into our grade. That's the 80% part. And you can see where Buncombe County, it's proficiency versus the rest of the state. Now, career in college ready is level four and five. We use that standard for much of our federal reporting. So that's why we kind of differentiate between the two. And you can see where Buncombe County and the state relate in that. But here's the question. What do school performance grade really measure? Okay? And this is where we want to look. And you've seen this before, and as long as Dr. Baldwin and Ms. Swanger allow me, you will continue to see this because I think it is absolutely critical. We look at this every year. So what we're looking at is a graph of every school in North Carolina. Okay? This is over 2,500 schools, 2,500 dots that have a school performance grade. On the left or the vertical axis, we have the performance composite. That's the levels three, fours, and fives, the percent at three, fours, and fives. On the X-axis or the horizontal one, we have the percent of economically disadvantaged students. And as we can clearly see, there is a direct correlation between socioeconomic status and achievement. Okay? So when we say 80% of our grade is really measuring socioeconomic status in reality. Okay? Now, when we look at this and we compare that same economic socioeconomic status versus growth, we can clearly see there is no correlation. All right? Every school, every child has the ability to grow regardless of their socioeconomic status. And I think that's the critical factor. That's why Dr. Baldwin advocates for something closer to 50-50 because this is measuring what we're truly doing in our schools. Now, a little lesson, because I think everybody has a fundamental thought in their mind about what is growth. But I really want to define and show exactly how North Carolina measures growth and how that works. So let's look at proficiency first. And let's think about how we can think of proficiency. Proficiency is like running a race with a finish line. What is that finish line? It's a level three, four, or five. Level three. Did you make level three? That's the only consideration. No consideration to where students start. We know students do not start at the same place. But the only thing we're concerned about in proficiency is did they get to the finish line? Well, how is that different when we look at growth? Growth is like running a race without a finish line. Every student starts wherever they are and they run as far and as fast as they can go. And we're going to measure how far and how fast they did that. So we're looking, how did our students compare to students, other students who started the race at a similar place? So we're looking at students that started in a similar place and seeing who's making the progress. Okay? It's our students versus the average of academically similar students. That's the key. All right? So how is this different for a teacher? All right? For a teacher, there is no score that you're trying to get. Now, those of us that are more experienced, we remember, that's a euphemism for old, I know, but we remember when there was those C scores. Y'all remember those C scores? All right? Where we knew before the child took the test what score they had to get to show growth. That's not that way anymore. We won't know how far a child's got to get until after everybody takes the test. So you can't aim for a score. You've just got to go as high as you can get. All right? Every student can grow even if they're not proficient. And that's a critical factor. Every student matters, all right, for accountability. No matter where they come into a class, they can grow. Okay? We have to meet students at their level and grow from there. Okay? That's the key for teachers. All right? So when we're looking at growth, we compare the progress of academically similar students across the state. All right? And we're looking at who made the least, the most, the average progress with those students. So if I could get my five volunteers to come on down quickly. Come on. Come on. I want to give us a visual of exactly what we're doing.
Are these reluctant volunteers?
I tell you what, it was slim pickings when I did it.
You better watch that knee there.
What I want y'all to do is line up facing me, all in line, together, shoulder to shoulder. All right? You've got some room. All right? So what we're showing here, these are groups of students. And it's a real important key to remember, we never measure growth on an individual student, ever. It's not valid. We only measure growth on groups of students. So it could be a classroom. It could be a school. It could be the district. But it's a group of students. All of these students, if you notice, they're at the same starting line. They are academically similar. So they could be low achieving students. They could be high achieving students. They could be average achieving students, but they're all the same. All right? So take one step forward. Take two. Three. You're going to have to take four big ones to get to his three.
Let's count.
Take five. Keep coming. You're one more. Yep. Come on. Keep coming. Keep coming. Keep coming. Keep coming. All right? So does everybody agree that all of these students made progress? They all advanced, but that's not growth. Stanley, you're representing the average progress for your group of students in the state. All right? Ben, unfortunately, your group of students made significantly and statistically significant less progress. That's what we would call a group that would be, did not meet growth. And what color is that? That's our red. So they all know that. All right? Will and Jeremy, your groups were kind of close to the average. So we can't really statistically say there's any difference in the progress you made. All right? So you met your growth standard. And that color is?
Green.
Green. Good. All right? Now, this is our teacher's pet. This is the group. This is the group that made statistically significant more progress than the average. And this would be our exceeding growth. Color?
Blue.
That's where we want to be. All right? So thank you all. That's good. So I really wanted to. meeting, exceeding, or not meeting growth. Okay? All right? So let's finish up with what's new in testing. And I will say, from my perspective, there are a lot of positive changes that we're making in testing. Some not always, but this is. All of our tests, starting this year, will now have a maximum of three hours. I know that still sounds like a lot of time to sit, but compared to the four hours, we'll take it. All right? So we've reduced the length of our tests from four hours to three hours. Now, with that, because we've cut the number of questions, and you have to have a certain number of questions to fill out five distinct levels, we will now only have four levels. And those four levels are not proficient, level three, level four, and level five. And you're probably wondering, why couldn't they get more creative with the names? They kept level three, four, and five because they are built into other statutes. So for level three, for our school performance grades, it's listed that way. Level five for our advanced math courses that were required to place students in if they score a level five. So there's some legislative reasons for keeping those three, fours, and fives. And our ESA plan calls fours and fives career in college ready for federal reporting. Our new math tests were implemented in the 2018-19 school year, which meant that our math scores were delayed until August. That was pretty painful because we want to know so we can start planning. And it's kind of hard when you have to wait till August, but it's just a function because what happened over the summer, and this is going to happen for our ELA this year, it's going to be the same thing. We won't get ELA scores until August because we have to undergo this level-setting process in July. And that's where about 100 teachers converge on Raleigh and they sit in a room for a week and they set these levels. They go through a really rigorous process for where is that level three, that level four, that level five? Where are they? And what questions? And it's a pretty detailed process. So, and the other big news was that NC final exams have been eliminated starting in the 2020-21 school year. Okay? So that's a pretty big change. So if you're bored one night and just can't sleep, here's where you need to go to see that. And you can see all those things there, all that data. I did want to point out one thing because I really have a, you know, a real concern of mine is the fact that our grades are so heavily based on socioeconomic status. DPI has put this out. It's just a paper that talks about, look at the grades and look at the social, related to the socioeconomic stats. And hopefully, we can see that where most of our A schools reside, they reside in the highest socioeconomic status groups. And where do our Fs reside? They reside in our lowest socioeconomic status. And that's a real concern that I have in how we're projecting and discussing schools. So with that, are there any questions?
I personally want to thank you, Mr. Airwood, because after five years of you teaching this to me, I'm beginning to understand. Thank you for your efforts and what you do for us in helping us disaggregate this information and provide support for our principals and our teachers.
I have one question, as you might imagine. So I was under the impression, which our attorney has just straightened out for me, but I was under the impression that with this new law, they made permanent the 15-point scale, but I thought the 80-20 was still being looked at.
It is. Part of what that law entailed was that DPI is tasked to research other possible methods for reporting that grade. And I think the General Assembly, there are a lot in the General Assembly that are really looking at having a separate achievement grade and a separate growth grade. And then there's some that are advocating a 51-49 model. The reason 51-49 is that ESA states that achievement has to outweigh growth. Okay? So I think it's February, the state superintendent has to report to the General Assembly on some, you know, possibilities for reporting the school performance grade.
But the 15-point scale is set.
Correct. That was passed and then they had to study the other part.
Gotcha. That's helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. At this time, it is time for public comment. Will you announce our people that are going to make public comment, please?
Yes, ma'am. We have five signed up for public comment tonight to discuss an RFP for solar. Our first, I'm going to ask all five of you to come down and line up. This would be Harmony Kunst, Berenice Vera, Josh Draper, Mayor Goldberg, and Shane McCarthy. And our first will be Harmony Kunst. And please speak from behind the podium.
Hello. Can you hear me? All right. Well, I'm loud, so it's fine. My name is Harmony Kunst and I represent Martin L. Mesbit Discovery Academy. I once presented a proposition two years ago to the Board of Commissioners in Asheville. We were shut down the first time they eventually saw our way. It was a very emotional and passionate ordeal that I still am grappling with today as I come to you with my heart on my sleeve. In my school of just 400 students, we were able to collect 218 signatures in support of this movement. With solar paneling at its most affordable price ever, I and the people of my school implore you to enjoin us in our cause for a cleaner, sustainable energy.
Our second, Berenice Vera.
Okay. Hello. Good afternoon, all y'all. My name is Berenice Vera and I'm the one that started the petitions this year. I made petitions for everybody across the school to get some and, oh, and I represent Irwin High School. So we got 141 petitions. And we're just trying to help the environment and help everything because all the climate change is happening. And we understand that you guys are thinking about this, but we would like for you guys to consider it more.
Thank you. Our third, Josh Draper.
Hi, I'm with TC Robertson High School. I'm going to be reading off this a little bit. Climate change is widely accepted in the public arena as a pressing issue. If you turn on the news, you'll hear presidential candidates and environmental scientists spewing information and urging action. The fact is, our atmosphere is heating at an unnatural and increasingly fast rate, largely due to the use of fossil fuels. The warmest year on record is 2016. The second, third, and fourth warmest years next to that are 2015, 2017, and 2018, according to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration. Our very own county powers our school system and our government buildings with coal, but there is clearly a need for environmental reform. And maybe we can't implement this worldwide, not overnight, but if a place like Asheville is willing to switch to cleaner methods, maybe a trend will start. And the fact is, even if the environmental concerns of carbon-based power don't sound alarming, the economic benefits can't be overlooked. A significant part of our $5 million a year utility budget goes into covering our necessity of energy. But if we overcame the immediate financial obstacles of installing renewable solar energy, this new clean source would pay for itself in the span of just a few years. Taking steps to prevent the future collapse of natural ecosystems is imperative, but perhaps to some, saving millions in the short term. solar energy, this new clean source would pay for itself in the span of just a few years. Taking steps to prevent the future collapse of natural ecosystems is imperative, but perhaps to some, saving millions in the short term is more important. Well, solar costs, on average, are 25% less than coal, according to InsideClimateNews.org, and the price is only expected to drop. Regardless of where you stand on this, agreeing to cover the large upfront cost of widespread solar panel installation is the best course of action.
Thank you. Maeve Goldberg.
My name is Maeve Goldberg. I'm a senior at Asheville High School. Thank you for giving me this time today to speak with you on behalf of my classmates at Asheville High School in Sosa. Our campus has a history of meaningful climate action. First, last year, our Asheville High School Student Government Association passed a climate action resolution as a way to publicly acknowledge and communicate our commitment to addressing climate change with solutions that work for our schools. Secondly, our campus delivered nearly 600 signatures of support to both the Buncombe County Commissioners and the Asheville City Council when they were deciding whether or not to pass their 100% renewable energy resolutions. Lastly, Asheville High School won the Global Drawdown Eco Challenge competition in April of 2018, a competition rooted in solutions to reverse global warming. We, the youth, have demonstrated our commitment to quickly and effectively addressing climate change. Because our future lives and livelihoods are at stake, we need our schools to take action too. Schools use an enormous amount of energy. Solar energy is the most viable energy option for schools, because the sun shines while our classes are in session. Our campus is asking you to add Buncombe County schools to the request proposals with the city and county in order to get the lowest price per kilowatt hour for utility-scale solar installation and have the best financing options. Solar energy will pay for itself over time and then save the school district money. Solar energy is the gift that keeps on giving. The choice that you make today will affect your students' lives in the future. Because of this, I'm delivering over 500 signatures to you from our campus to ask for you to please move forward with gathering information to see if utility-scale solar installations would be a good fit for our school. Thank you.
Thank you. And Shane McCarthy.
Hi, I'm Judy Maddox. We are a coalition of Youth for Environmental Stewardship. We are all nine public high schools. There are five more. They'd like to introduce themselves, give the name of their school. We have a total together of 1,973 petition signatures. I'm representing the community. We gathered petitions at the climate rally, at Sierra Club, at Audubon, at UNCA. I have 360. And Ben is going to tell you who he is.
Hi, I'm Ben Harvey. I'm representing Anka High School. Program really means a lot to all the students at our school, and we've been taking further steps to further changes in our climate and how to help it out with our school system.
Hi, I'm Zeke Bauer from Irwin High School.
I'm Nate Senna. I'm also from Irwin High School.
We would like to say our school has a lot of pride and dedication to wanting to become more involved in the environment and becoming more involved in a sustainable energy source. We had 253 students sign from our school, which is impressive, because we are one of the smaller schools in the counties. That's a pretty big chunk of our student populace. So we would like to thank you guys for hearing us out today.
Hi, my name is Song. I actually am from Nesbit, but I'll be representing for AC Reynolds. But we, they have happened to have 25 signatures, and I'm happy to represent this. Thank you.
My name is Anae Felipe, and I represent Buncombe County Early College, and we got 64 signatures. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Althea Bennett. I'm a sophomore at North Buncombe High School. And before I reveal, I guess, the number of signatures that we had from North Buncombe, I'd like to inform the board that the United States of America produces 15% of global emissions alone and has the highest amount per capita. North Buncombe High School has 284 signatures.
And we would like to present our petitions, and we would like to give them to...
Ms. Matt.
To this lady.
To Ms. Matt, ladies, right here.
Gotcha. Yes, we do have one more. Mr. Shane McCarthy? Thank you.
Hey, y'all. I'm Shane McCarthy. I'm with Asheville's chapter of the Sunrise Movement. On September 20th, over 4 million people worldwide mobilized for the global climate strike to demand action to fight climate change. And in Asheville, hundreds of students walked out and skipped school to rally in front of City Hall to demand that we take action. So with this solar RFP, you have the chance right now to start Asheville's transition to clean energy. So please, listen to your students and listen to their demands, because they're terrified that they won't have a livable future because of the climate crisis. Sign on to their request for proposals for solar power. There's no obligation now, and there's really no downside to doing it. Thank you.
This does conclude our public comment signups.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments, and we are already in discussion with the Buncombe County government about this issue. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is our action agenda. And we, the first item is the Anka High School Track Renovation Project. I'm going to let Mr. Queen lead the charge.
Thank you.
And Mr. Fairley, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Let him announce the change.
Sorry, Mr. Fairley.
Board, I would like to request a minor revision to the recommendation. If there are insufficient funds in the project budget, the last line of the recommendation, we would like to change that through capital outlay contingency, if necessary, that this change order be funded.
Mr. Queen?
And is that instead of the liquidated damages? Is that what you're saying? So that...
That's correct.
So it would be, funding will be accomplished through remaining project funds and the...
Capital outlay contingency, if necessary.
Okay.
That's correct. I'm aware of the situation, aware of the issue concerning the track at Anka, and Mr. Fairley has worked, I think, very hard to try to seek solution. In fact, on his own, seeking some, some additional satisfaction, I believe, working with an out-of-state high school that might be able to assist as well. But in any event, I would wholeheartedly support this, and I would make the motion that it be moved with the amendment as noted by Mr. Fairley.
Thank you, Mr. Queen. Is there a second?
Second.
We'll have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Anka High School. Okay? The next item on the agenda is the Clyde A. Irwin High School Use of Capital Outlay Athletic Allotment, and that is Ms. McCants. Do board members have a question for her?
Yes, I may have a question.
Oh, Mr. Queen.
Opening that file right now.
He's looking.
The bottom line, Ms. McCants, is, as I, as I reviewed the quotes that we had on the various factions or parts of this project, I noted that it seems like all of the winner, winning bids were from over in the Irwin, Tennessee area, the contractors that were going to be doing the work. And I just wanted to be sure that it was advertised locally as well, and did we, how many bids did we receive?
So this was actually just, this, this doesn't go through the actual bid process, so what Mr. Bailey and his team actually did was they just consulted, because this is between $5,000 and $20,000.
Yes.
So they just got in touch with any vendors that they knew could be able to provide quotes on the project, so it did not have to actually come through me as an actual bid or an RFP or an RFQ.
Okay.
And those, those lower ones, it looks like one is from Charlotte and one is from Swanonoa, for those smaller projects, if I'm reading them right.
So the winning bid...
I do see, I do see one, yes, for Swanonoa.
Or, yeah.
The...
One's Swanonoa and one's Charlotte.
The sound system, I think, was what caught my eye.
Right.
Johnson City, Tennessee, I believe, and Irwin...
And that was...
Irwin, Tennessee. Okay. That's all ahead.
That's all.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Don't move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Could I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I expect to be able to hear things when I go to Irwin now. Mr. Bailey? We have a policy, beg your pardon?
Thank you.
Right. After all the work, huh? Our next item is a policy for approval, and we're going to waive the first reading policy that we have in order to adopt this policy, do, and it's Policy 3460, which is the graduation requirements for our students. Do board members have questions for Ms. Swanger?
I have one clarifying question. So just to get it into the public record, my understanding of this is that we're basically required to do this because of a state law that was passed, right? This is not just, we decided, tired of that, let's stop doing it.
This is part of the Testing Reduction Act of 2019, so it is state law.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? I would entertain a motion to approve. Hello?
Anybody home?
Amy did. Okay, thank you. Did I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, the next item is for our North Carolina School Boards Association, North Carolina School Boards Association Voting Delegates Form. And we, because of the number of students that we have and the people that we represent, we have four openings for delegates to the Assembly. I don't even know which ones of us are going. We're all going. So would you? I did fill out my form. All right? So I would entertain motions or suggestions for voting delegates.
Madam Chair, I did not get to be a delegate last year, so I would love the opportunity this year.
Without objection, that would be fine. Can I do that now, Mr. Attorney?
Without objection, you're proceeding just fine.
Thank you. He wouldn't let me do that earlier tonight. Okay. Cindy, number one. Item number two.
I'll...
Beg your pardon?
Pick me.
Okay. That would be good. You can be item number two, Donna. Somebody else? Item number three. Now, this is not brain scientist. Come on.
You want to do it?
And number four? Amy has to sit on the stage and watch all of us, so she, yeah, there she goes.
Not here, so maybe we should choose...
Do you want to put Pat up there?
I'm an eight, Pat.
Okay, Pat would be fine.
Without objection.
Without objection, Pat's going to be fine. Just, Pat, I should have told you this earlier, he's on vacation, his family and his new grandbaby. And the grandbaby has, how many bathing suits?
Three.
He's six weeks old. Get an alternate? Okay, Peggy, we'll let you be the alternate. And so now, we need to all agree that this is a good idea. All of us shake our head.
Very good.
Okay? That item's done. Now, we're on to the consent... By consensus, I tell you, everybody should have a little attorney sitting right beside To tell them exactly what they're supposed to say.
Don't put that in the minutes.
All right? The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. In the Consent Agenda, we have the minutes from September 5th, regular and open session. We have the personnel report, and we have the advisory council request to add members. I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Queen. And a second?
Second.
Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? You have on your agenda information for the notification of construction and repair projects and change orders, and a policy for first reading, which is 8350, entitled Fixed Assets Inventory. You also have, Dr. Baldwin's already done these items on the announcement, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. You folks like being here way too much. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's go home.